We'd like to welcome everyone to South Weber City Council at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, June 24th, 2025. We're going to begin with a pledge of allegiance by Councilman Davis, and then I'll offer a prayer.
Mr. Eisen, prepare for me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Heavenly Father, as we begin this council meeting this evening, we thank thee for this opportunity we have of serving our community. We're grateful for our community and for the things that they offer to one another, and pray that thou will bless us and help us in the decisions that we make this night, that they will be correct and be proper and be the best that will benefit our community. We're thankful for those that work here for the city and pray that thou bless them. We're thankful for our law enforcement and for our fire department and those first responders that serve and keep us safe. Pray that thou also bless them and protect them. Grateful for this great country in which we live, freedoms that we enjoy. Pray that thou be with us now at this meeting, pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. Okay, we'll begin with public comments. If you have a comment that you would like to make, we'll ask you to come up to the microphone, state your name, city in which you reside, and please respond to the entire council and realize that the council will not respond back. So we're open for public comments. If someone would like to come forward, please do so.
Hey, my name is Cindy Cook, and I live in South Weber. We're at 2700, right close to the freeway on 89. It's not a highway, it's a freeway. So I'm here to just bring up a few issues. I know this is old news for a lot of people. They've talked about building a sound sound barrier for a lot of years. It hasn't happened. We've lived there 16 years, and there's been people talking about, oh, they're going to do it this year, they're going to do it next year, but nothing ever happens. So I decided to take it upon myself to take a petition. I have five other people helping me to get signatures around South Weber that are affected by the highway, to see if we can do that. I have still, I have talked to UDOT, and they were not very helpful with that, and basically said that they cannot build a wall in an existing place unless there's a project. So with that said, I propose that is what we do is, this goes to UDOT and South Weber City officials. We, the undersigned residents of South Weber, respectfully request that the cost in construction of a sound wall be incorporated into the upcoming I-84 interchange project. The noise from the traffic traveling along Highway 89 and the I-84 corridor, particularly in the area between the Maverick Gas Station and 193, has significantly impacted the quality of life for nearby residents. As development in the area continues and traffic volume increases, the need for a noise barrier has become critical. Including a sound wall as part of the larger I-84 exchange project is a cost-effective and practical solution that would mitigate the constant traffic noise affecting nearby homes and neighborhoods. It would enhance public health and well-being by reducing noise pollution. It would protect property values and preserve the residential character of South Weber. It would also demonstrate a commitment to community impact in infrastructure planning. So we urge UDOT and all responsible agencies to prioritize the addition of a sound wall within the current scope and budget of the I-84 interchange improvement project. And this is sincerely by the residents of South Weber. So I am kind of the spokesperson for them. This is, they all have a desire for this and would like to go this direction. So I will proceed to get the signatures and hand them into UDOT. And if we have to get a lobbyist, we'll do that, but we are not going to take no for an answer at this point. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
My name is Bill Cook. I live in South Weber. I'm here for a different issue, same issue. Still bothers me on the one thing, but when we moved to South Weber in the fall, the most beautiful trees on 2700 would turn red. They now are brown and tipping over in the South Weber winds. I see the city maintenance people come by and they stare at them, and as they topple over the fence, they do nothing about it. I'm proposing that if you'll get your crews out there, cut them all down. There's one living tree out of the 22. There's four of them that have some leaves, but the bark's all off, so they're effectively dead. And as soon as the wind comes up, they'll be toppled over either in the street or over the fence into the UDOT property, which they're not picking up the things either. City of South Weber did send a guy out there with a chainsaw. He cut it off at the bottom to the part that went over the top and took that back, but the tree's still remaining in the UDOT property. There's a new one over there that happened three days ago. It's tipped over in the UDOT property, but it's still broken off. And then there's the other 10 absolutely dead, four semi-dead and one living. Plus, you used to have about another 15, uh, four or five trees out there. You've already cut down. Just cut them down. It's just a nice word. That's what people see when they come into South Weber. They see the LDS church and then dead tree, dead tree, dead tree, dead tree, all in our neighborhood. So I appreciate if, if, if that were my home, you would find me if I didn't clear my walkways with snow. If I don't, I have a large tree there that cover, if it covers the side, the sign that says 25 miles an hour, you would most likely cite me. So I'm citing you. Clean up your mess. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Michael, Michael Grand, 26, near Deer Run Drive. About two or three months ago, I had brought this up, you know, nothing urgent, but I'll bring it up again. It doesn't even cost as much money. But at the frontage road intersecting with South Weber Drive, at that traffic light, when you make a right, most of the traffic is turning right, very little traffic is turning left or going into park and ride. So right now, as it stands, left lane is a dedicated left turn, and right lane is right turn as well as going into the park and ride. Why can't we make the left turn, left turn only, as well as going into park and ride? And the right turn remains free right turn. This way, it won't cause a jam in the morning hours, seven, eight cars, not a big deal, but that can easily be done. I know Brandon is not here. Maybe we need to involve UDOT. It's just paperwork. I think the yellow lines, the median are just lined up. You just have to change the signage. That's what I think. At some point, maybe a feedback would be nice, otherwise every two, three months, I keep bringing up the same issue. So thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else? If not, then we'll move along. Appreciate your comments. First item is presentation from Davis County Sheriff's Department on their quarterly report, so we'll ask them to come forward.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us. My name is Elizabeth Pinto. I'm the investigative analyst for Davis County Sheriff's Office. Today, we are going to be presenting to you the quarter, the first quarter of 2025. So that is from January, the beginning of January, January 1st until March 31st of 2025. Some of these statistics you might see start showing until halfway through June, because it's a live date, so they're updated right now. So. Oh, nope, that's me. Fantastic. Cool. All right, so for patrol hours, again, just looking for the first three months of the year, we are above average. So throughout this presentation, we have some comparative statistics prepared for you. Blue represents a three-year average, orange or yellow represents 2024, and green represents 2025. So in this presentation, we are covering quarter one, which is January through March. And from January through March, we are over what we have been for the last three-year average and for 2024.
Question on that, the, I know we've got it on the average here. Don't we have that in the contract, a certain amount of hours between the?
The contract is based on patrol unit, not a specific number of hours in the city. So it's two patrol units.
These numbers represent the number of patrol hours only, patrol man-hours only within the city of South Weber throughout these months. So for January, for example, we had 399 hours of patrol man-hours in South Weber. Field-initiated incidents, we are above average for what we have been for 2024 in the three-year average. Dispatched incidents, we are lower than the three-year average. It's nice to see. Citations, for the first quarter of the year, we are over the three-year average, certainly by a long shot. And we are above or at about at par of what we were at that time of the year and during 2024. For speeding, these are speeding tickets. These might be warnings or moving violations for January through March. We are certainly above the three-year average, and we are at, above or slightly below what we were for 2024. Person crimes, we are under, which is very good to see. Property crimes, we are about at average or under, which is wonderful to see. Society crimes, these can be a little bit funky to look at. Anywhere where there are, for example, between March and May, where that green line does not connect, that just means that there were no crimes that were society, were against society in nature during that time. So for the first quarter of the year, we were below or at average for society crimes. The following statistics will reflect solely just for the first quarter. During that first quarter, we had a total of 310 citations, of which one resulted in a booking of an individual. One was an arrest that was a site and release. There were three fix-it tickets, 129 moving violations, 31 non-moving violations, 51 written warnings, 10 parking violations, making up for a total of about 310.
So is speeding the moving violation?
So.
Speeding is a moving violation, so anything that requires a vehicle to actually be in motion for the violation to occur.
Totally without the lines, any of those kinds of things.
Yeah. Well, yes, I'd have to talk, check on that one, because that's more of an equipment violation. That's not necessarily a moving violation.
But for example, a non-moving violation would be like driving without insurance, right? Or like your registration being expired. Your vehicle does not have to be in motion for us to identify that, that a registration is expired, right? So that would be an example of a non-moving violation. Absolutely. Great question. So here for totals, speeding, we had 86 violations, excuse me, citations, of which 70 were actual citations and 16 were written warnings.
Question. Of these speeding, do you have a sense of location within the city without being specific? Where these are occurring? Are they on the state roads? Are they on the subsurface streets, collector roads?
I would suspect they're going to be on the faster-moving roads. That's where you're going to have the heaviest traffic, and that's where you're going to find the most violators caught in violation of the speeding law. So where traffic's going to be lower, you're going to find fewer of those citations, and the deputies are getting penned toward where the traffic is higher and where they can have more of a an effect, I guess, as far as visibility and impact on their efforts. So where they're, where they're making more traffic stops, kind of like the, the shooting fish in a barrel type of thing. You're going to have more traffic on South Weber Drive than you are on 8200 South. You're going to have more of an effect on a, I guess, a city global. That deputy's going to be more visible to more people enforcing the violation there.
I understand that demographic, but they also have more pedestrians on the subsurface streets than we do on the higher speeding streets.
Correct.
And I'm concerned about them and the violators who are speeding on our, our subsurface streets, if you will. That's the crux of my question, so thank you.
We do have, what was it, three months ago or six months ago, we had a hotspot that you guys made, kind of a visual map showing the areas that were getting the most either tickets or things going on as a report from the deputies. Do we still have that? Has, do we not, are we not refreshing that? Is that just a one-time thing y'all did?
I believe that that was treated as a, as an ad hoc request.
Okay.
But yeah, I believe that, that request in particular was treated as, as an ad hoc and was a one-time basis. I don't.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. I share Councilman Windsor's concerns, especially now that it is summer. We've only got a few months, but the kids, they really just dart back and forth. I've seen so many kids now on bicycles that, I mean, they've got the helmets and everything, and they don't even look as they cross some of the roads. And we're talking view drive and 2100 all the time. So again, I love what's going on with the, the speeding. I think this is definitely impressive. I would like to see more patrols going just up in the neighborhoods during times that the kids are out there playing and just kind of keeping an eye on things and some of the speeders that come around. So but yeah, you guys already know that. Thank you.
Stop that you're seeing that, that we're seeing this happen repeatedly?
Your collector streets, specifically Deer Run, Deer Drive, 2100 East, 7800 South. Then you go on the west side, 475, anywhere around the parks, where it's 25 miles an hour, cars are routinely doing 35. You know, so it's, I appreciate the service that you're doing on the state roads, but our city roads need your attention as well.
Yeah, I do know that 475 is, is addressed. That's a hotspot for our deputies to patrol. Canyon Drive, Deer Run Drive are some of the, the more busy ones that they do. But there is a discretionary area that they, they have a tolerance for, for what they that we really can't, we can't say you have to stop everyone who's going five miles over. There's just certain places that we're just from getting that forceful with it, because then it starts moving into the realm of BODA, so.
Thank you for letting us know the areas of concern. Of the, oh, gosh, that is quite small. Of the, I did is the problem. Of the 890, I think.
Eighty-nine.
Thank you so much. Of all the incidents that occurred, the vast majority, over 97%, were non-criminal in nature. Of the remaining less than approximately 2.75 to 4% that were criminal in nature, those were comprised of death and two, two death investigations, 10 person crimes, 10 property crimes, and four crimes against society. Compared to statistics for investigations, looks as though for 2025 for person crimes, we are about at average. For property crimes, we are below average substantially.
Yes.
A special victims unit, we are below average, which is fantastic, at or below average.
Very much.
And for financial crimes, we are below average, certainly for the first quarter. We'd love to see. Investigation statistics for the actual quarter itself. During that period of time, we had 21 new cases, during which 60 hours were worked on those cases. And again, that is just hours that were worked during that time period. Of course, many of those cases are still ongoing and hours are still being worked on. Of those, the most prevalent case types were child abuse and neglect and fraud. Victim services, so you'll notice here that these victim services statistics actually reflect February 1st through March 31st. The reason being is that we changed the way that victim services The reason being is that we changed the way that victim services track their statistics, specifically their hours. So before it used to be when they close a case out, they would put how many hours that they have. Now they're live tracking their hours and that started in February. So going forward, we'll have a more accurate representation of how many hours our victims advocates are actually working during that quarter as opposed to how many hours they worked on cases that were closed during that quarter. So these numbers are going to look a little low and it's because it only uh encompasses two out of the three months that we should be covering for this quarter.
Uh those are low.
I Well, we also love low numbers in this area, right? You know, especially specifically in investigations and um, you know, dispatched calls and stuff like that. I mean, low numbers are great numbers, so. Um. You know what? I I'm so sorry, those those numbers don't quite add up. Uh those those should be total victims should be ten. Um new victims should be eight, ongoing victims should be two. I apologize. I fixed that and then totally forgot to add a screenshot in there. Um we did almost, uh our victims advocates uh supported victims for nearly twenty-five hours during that period of time. Um in which case, the uh type of victimizations, the vast majority was person crimes. Um the types of services provided was comprised of um individual advocacy services, uh which could be a a wide range of things. Um such as like providing crisis plans, things of that nature, um educational and referral services. Uh so that could be to to therapy or um ways to get restitution, things of that nature, court advocacy services. So our victims advocates will actually attend court with their victims um to provide that, to provide that sense of support that is so, so very well needed. That is all that we have for you today, at least on my end. Is there anything else that I can that I can provide for you? Any questions at all?
Any much? I have done.
Great job.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much for what you do for our community.
Um one quick, uh there's been a wave of um salesmen coming through, uh like always during the summer. Um we've had a quite a few complaints, though, of a couple of companies that are um being a little more aggressive, going into the backyard, will not leave the homes. Uh they threaten to call the police, they threaten to call the city, and the individuals will just sit there and argue with them and um they've gone into garages, all kinds of different things now with it. Um so um I don't know if there's anything y'all can do, but if you uh as as far as I know, we don't even have any businesses that are currently registered right now. Is that right?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but I would uh I would be surprised if there were any solicitors licenses up here.
So um yeah, if any of your officers see somebody out, um even just driving by would be nice to remind them that this is, you know, a a lawful city.
Right, right. And if if we can, one, I guess, request I have, yes, I'll definitely put that out to our to our deputies and have them look out for that. But a request is to remind you to the public, if we can get it out there, if we are having problems with those people, please call us. We this is one of those problem areas that we want to address. Those situations can be used as masked as is more nefarious reasons. So
Yeah.
Yes, please. That's something we really, please, that's okay to call into our dispatch center and ask for a deputy show up. Just even if we can't catch them, our deputy showing up and just being visible to those people that are behaving like that has an effect on either skirting them out of the city, getting them to stop their process, but if we can catch them, because sometimes it's hard for us to see it when they're walking down the path, but if we can get someone to call us, sign a complaint for it.
And that would be on the non-emergency number?
Either way.
Okay.
Either way, we don't want to say one or the other just because we do, we want to get out there and take care of the problem.
Okay. Thank you so much on that. Thank you.
Mayor, I do have a follow-up. I do have a follow-up if I can ask a question. Um any, any insight you can give us to the person who tried to make a second drive-through through the Zoll issues?
Uh it's an ongoing investigation and they're uh it's being handled appropriately. Yeah, I I mean, obviously he missed a stall. Um but yes, it's uh there's, yeah, there's nothing I can add that wouldn't be violating ethical issues.
Thank you.
If you want to add, as far as um your your um your question, Councilmember, um those, as far as the um the solicitors are concerned, um and and again, to to Lieutenant Boucher's point, there's, you know, if we can get there in time and what have you, uh but the more calls that we get in, the more that that then provides us data that can i- if we get enough data and where if it hits that threshold where it's considered statistically significant, we we can put out trends and stuff like that. So really just to like, uh just to piggyback and and bolster uh what Lieutenant Boucher was saying, it's really important that they call in.
Okay.
And another thing to that, I know that we had a problem with um certain uh solicitor groups that were a nationwide group that I believe the Attorney General's Office was able to get involved with due to enough complaints, and that's another option that we have, even if we're not able to commit etch a specific crime in South Weaver through South Weaver's ordinance on soliciting. At least the documentation, if we can catch the people, document who they're with and who they're soliciting for. There's the possibility that we can collect enough data and information that that can be moved up to a higher level, extending beyond the the reaches of Utah, unfortunately.
Yeah, okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is our consent agenda. We need to have approval of noon tenth, twenty twenty-five minutes. Any discussion or changes to these minutes? If not, we'll look for a motion.
Here are no changes. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item is a public hearing. We'll look for a motion to open the public hearing for fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget amendment number three.
All moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A public hearing is open. Anyone have any comments they'd like to make? If seeing none, we'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item, resolution twenty-five dash twenty, fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget amendment number three. Council have any discussions or concerns on this amendment?
Is there anything we should know, Dave?
The the only one that I would kind of draw your attention to that uh hasn't necessarily been discussed uh broadly to this point is um the Zoll monitor. I had to bring that, I had to bring Derek in. On page ten of the, on page ten of the packet, um one of the line items there that uh that Brett has outlined is the Zoll monitor. And the situation there is uh we have a replacement schedule for, these are heart monitors. Um Derek can speak to it better, but the long and short of it is uh the one that we have, the older, we have two of them, the older one um is in need of replacement immediately. We were planning on replacing that in a couple of years, but it came up um as an urgent change. And so with some of the additional revenue that we had received uh within the fire department, um that's covered and that shows up in the amendments, but that needs to be an urgent purchase rather than a planned purchase in a couple of years. And so that's the only one that hasn't really been discussed previously or or um would be considered new.
Do we have any details on why that was that failed earlier than expected?
Yeah, the twelve lead component of the monitor will no longer work and it's gonna cost us a lot to get it fixed. And since we're planning on replacing it, I think it'd be more financially beneficial to just put that money towards a monitor we're planning on replacing in a couple of years versus putting that money towards fixing the current one.
And what's the estimated lifespan of those devices?
We try to keep them for eight to ten years. It's kind of been the goal.
Gotcha. And the one that we're replacing is how old?
We bought it in twenty eighteen.
Okay.
So we're about where we were planning on being anyways.
Got it.
Years earlier than planned. The um one nice thing about these newer monitors is they've made them so they're compartmental, the different tech in them. So instead of having to replace a whole model, the whole monitor, if part of it goes out, these new monitors, you can just, it's modular, is what I meant to say. So you can take that module out and just re- replace the module if we have an issue with the module. Um so that's a nice benefit to these newer ones. If we have issues like that moving forward, we can just replace each little component instead of the whole monitor.
And I'm just hearing plural a couple of times, is the sixty thou for one or for multiple?
That's for one.
Okay. How old is the other one? Just for information.
We bought that in twenty twenty-one or twenty, right at the end of twenty twenty-one, early twenty twenty-two.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Uh will look for a motion on this resolution?
May I move to approve resolution twenty-five dash twenty, a resolution of South River City Council adopting a budget amendments for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. We'll do roll call vote, starting with Councilman, Councilwoman Petty.
Aye.
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 Hey, unanimous motion carries. Thank you. Next item, resolution twenty-five dash twenty-one, final budget fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Any discussion on this resolution?
The only question I had was, there was a lot of discussion about the repairs needed for the firehouse, and I haven't seen those breakouts like we wanted. Is that still being?
Still being worked on. Yeah.
Okay, when do we expect to have that? Back to the council?
Probably when I get over there. Gary.
Yeah. I just wanna, I just wanna make sure we don't lose sight of that because I know those are all important things. And seeing that breakout is gonna be crucial for us to be able to move at least part of that forward over time.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yep. That's all I have.
Okay, we'll look for a motion.
Mayor, make a I motion to approve resolution twenty-five twenty-one, final budget fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Motion and a second. We'll do roll call vote, starting with Councilman Windsor.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Shout out to Brett on that. That's a lot of work and.
Good one to have done.
Sure.
Hard work. And yes, we.
And all of you, you did a lot of work too.
I'm doing.
Thank you.
Fantastic. And next one, resolution twenty-five dash twenty-two, street sweeping contract. Any comments on this contract?
Can I just make one comment here? I don't have any um objection to the to the motion here, but can we just um align the timing to where they don't do the street sweeping on the garbage collection streets on their days? So you don't see a wave in the street every time because they're avoiding all the garbage cans that are out? That would be my only ask, is if we can communicate with them going forward that they time their street sweeping on non-garbage collection days?
I totally second that too.
That seems very reasonable.
Um also, I know it talks in here about the other bid we received and the dump fee and all, whatever. But I just wanted to make sure, we've, I've seen different street sweepers. This one will actually wet the street and collect it as it goes, correct? That's part of the service. I've seen other ones that just like brush it off the street, but all it's doing is cleaning, creating a cloud of dust and then it just settles somewhere else.
That's my understanding of the service. I can clarify that.
Okay, that's what the other one, as you can imagine, does not do much good, so.
Sure. Yeah.
This contract is in addition to, I'm sorry.
No, please.
This contract would be in addition to and above and beyond that which the gravel pits do uh for the accumulation materials that they cause.
Correct.
So we're scheduling this service so that we're not overlapping or closely falling behind, so they need to be timed. Are they, are they just really trying to come out whenever they want, or do we call them and schedule that?
We, for for our contract,
Yes.
we schedule it. Whatever the gravel pits do on their own, they've just done on their own. We can have coordination discussions with them and.
They may want to consider that, so we're not wasting the service. If one does it one day and then it comes in the next day, it doesn't make sense, so.
Yeah, agreed. I'll make note of that.
Good comment. Okay, anyone like to make a motion?
May I approve the resolution twenty-five dash twenty-two, uh street sweeping contract?
Second.
Motion in a second. We'll do roll call, starting with Councilwoman Petty.
Aye.
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 And I failed to mention that uh Councilman Haversen asked to be excused this evening. So we didn't give him that excuse, so. Wherever you're at, Blair, we're missing you. Okay, next item, broad risk assessment. Any discussion on this?
No, well done.
Hey, need a motion?
You only missed it by one point.
Yeah, it was really good.
Can't give ourselves half a point somewhere in there and so.
Mayor, make a motion to accept the fraud risk assessment as presented.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I mentioned the other two boards that I sat on, why their fraud uh risk assessment was almost identical. They were all high like this. I think uh Central Weaver was the highest. They were like three seventy-five or something, but all of them were really good.
Well, these are city, each city conducts their own, right?
Yes. Well, cities, districts do the same. Okay, discussion items. Uh Public Works Complex, we were down last Wednesday and they are working very diligently and as quickly as possible and it looks like a mound of ants down there. You've got someone working in about every area of the property down there, trying to meet their goal of I think it's like August the twenty-sixth. They still think they're gonna meet that goal. Uh I think, I don't know if by now the mezzanine will be poured. They said Thursday, was that? Last, I think it was this Thursday, wasn't it?
I think it's this week.
So sometime this week, they should have that poured. And uh it's coming down to where uh everything is substantially complete, other than uh doing the the main asphalt, they've got most all of the curb. Chaining fences going up, it's probably completed by now. Uh the waterways were mostly all poured, so just asphalt and then finishing up the main building, which is gonna be a lot of work. Uh they've got a lot yet to do, but they feel like they can still meet that deadline. Uh we did pick out a brick color that uh they can't get it. It's been back ordered for ninety days. So on the floor over there in front of Dave, you can see a sample of a color that they would like to use. It's probably the next closest thing to what they want. So if you'll look at that council and see what you think, if you think that'll work.
Did they also give you an option of the mortar color? Or is it just gonna be a standard gray or are they gonna hint that?
Be a uh, we could tell them a mortar color if we wanted.
Typically, when they have a running bond or something like that. I'm not sure what they're planning on doing there.
I would think probably with the uh uh color of siding that's on down there, probably natural would probably blend in with that with it. The concern I've got with this one is uh the building is kind of a dull color. And this has got quite a bit of gray. I don't know if.
Sometimes we ask, I don't know if it's in the contract to get a sample wall. It's like four foot by three foot. They give a sample of the bricks and the mortar and you can stand back and see, does that make sense? Or do you want to change any of the color? Or you commit to the whole building?
Okay, other than that, Dave, what have you got to add to what I?
I, this is just a really exciting time as the, as the structures are are there. Now they're pretty close to just doing the interior of that main building and and building it out. And so it starts to take shape inside and that. And um yeah, it's just coming down to the end, although that is the the usable space for, you know, where people are gonna be a lot, so it's an important piece.
They've set up their s- their uh office inside the uh vehicle storage uh building. So it's pretty much all completed. Taken out the trailer that they were meeting in and they're using using that building now. So yeah, it's moving along very well. Keep our fingers crossed that August twenty-sixth is. Keep our fingers crossed that August twenty-sixth is is the time it'll be completed with.
Mayor, I have a question, or observation, if you will, and driving by several times a day. Uh, I don't know how to form a question, but I've noticed that the soccer complex has some what looks to be some black poles in order to put up some netting to prevent airant soccer balls or balls to go across the entour, so yet I also noticed a step ladder that was leaned up against that rock wall from their side, suggesting that the public works facility is being accessed, and I'm concerned about, is it being accessed, and what is our liability risk of kids, uh athletes, or parents going over there for errant soccer balls that missed the net? Have we had any conversations with the soccer complex that thou shalt not enter that public works facility? Or are we going to take on any risk and liability if someone goes over there and twists an ankle uh climbing in and out, or has staff already addressed it, turned another cheek to that, or what's going on in that area, and if nothing, from your perspective, can you follow up with the public works department and report back to us as to what the firm, uh, black and white line is with regards to non-city members accessing the public works compound?
To this point, there hasn't been specific conversation about whether people are accessing, I haven't heard from contractor um or anybody on site that soccer players are climbing over that wall, um, so I will follow up and, and find out what extent that that's taking place, and let them know that we don't want anybody coming over that.
Wasn't a concern until I saw a step ladder leaned up, left up against it, and most of the players are Friday, Saturday, Sunday, in which the contractor probably isn't out there.
Yeah, I can see that being a problem, so.
They are putting a netting there, aren't they not?
Yeah, the netting is up. So I'll have a conversation about that.
Thank you, that's all I had, man.
So the netting is up now?
Yes.
So then there should not be any more balls going over that, should there?
Well, if they miss the goal, they may miss the net too, I don't know.
Well, the net, the net is only ice.
If I was shooting, you'd miss both, but there's.
How is that net?
Thirty.
Uh, yeah.
Take it pretty good.
It's a twenty-five, thirty feet, but the netting is only maybe ten feet square to either side of the goalposts, it's not running the entire length, no.
Okay. Then, yeah.
Yeah, there's still an ability to miss that and have it go over, I think it'll contain many, but yeah, I'll have a conversation.
Sounds like we might have an opportunity to uh collect soccer balls throughout the year, and then at country fair days, pass them out, right?
I always do it up the.
Off and back to them.
Off the floor when you do that.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a suggestion, um, have we had um our parks department specifically, uh Shay, take a look at the um landscaping that's going to be done on this building and around the building? Um, where they're the ones that are going to be managing and taking care of it, um, they would probably be a little bit better than just the contractor vision of what they want um around it.
There's landscape design plans that have already been, already been established, tho- those were established early, early on.
Who did those?
Um.
Contractor.
No, not the contractor, the Joneses Associates was involved, our building designer was involved. Um, members of our public work staff was involved, I wouldn't say Shay directly as our parks manager, but it's not, uh, it's not grassed area, it is, it's more ziriscape type stuff, it's low maintenance type landscaping.
Okay, thank you.
New business, anyone have any new business they'd like to discuss? Uh, maybe a couple of comments on our public comments that were made uh tonight. With that sound wall, we have reached out, and they uh started contacting us, why Dave and I generated a letter and sent it to you dot requesting a sound wall uh be put up, and, and some of the uh what Cindy had to say denied, where she got that information from us, cuz I uh I took a copy of that letter and gave it to her, so she knows that the city has been in contact with you dot. But we feel that, and you dot kind of made the comment, not to Dave or to myself, but to others in the community, that probably the best uh reaction would be for the community to start this petition up and to get as many signatures on it as possible, uh, but we are following up with that. And will continue to do so every opportunity that we have as a city. Uh, and on the trees, that's another discussion item that we, we've been having, and Dave, are we still online for what we talked about there?
Yeah, the last conversation I had with Shay was, she was planning on going and removing the dead trees. Um, and so when the resident there described seeing people out and looking at them and, and doing some things, I can only assume that that means they're actively working on removing the ones that are dead. Uh, Shay has been putting in, uh, in place a plan to replace those trees. Um, we know there was an estimate put together for a cost of replacement. Um, the irrigation system uh will need to be entirely replaced, uh, when they say that it's a wind issue. I think there is a little bit of a wind issue, but there's also um a soil and irrigation issue that has uh perpetuated the problem there. Uh, the goal uh that we've talked about uh as among staff and with the mayor's input is, we want that to be a tree-lined uh parkway, and we want that to be a nice visual for the city. And so that's what we're working toward, and yeah, right now, it, it, most of those are dead and need to be removed and replaced, and so Shay is actively working on that.
I thought that uh there isn't sustainable because of all the salt that gets piled on them during the winter, and that would destroy the soil, is that not true?
I think there is an element of that, but I don't think it's the biggest issue.
I don't think it's the biggest issue, if you go around, like at other cities, and I, since that comment has come up, other cities have the exact same thing and don't have dead trees. So it's more than just a salt issue.
There was also discussion that.
Nice too.
Yeah. Um, there was also discussion of having somebody else pay for this, whether it was you dot or the um water company. Yeah, Weaver Basin, uh, whatever happened on that end?
I had a conversation with Weaver Basin, and it does fall outside their construction limits, so their impact is hard to stretch that for their, their, now when they put their second pipe, they might be going over. But if we put the sound wall in, then that's gonna limit how they build their second pipe. My question, going in full circles, if we go through the expenditure of putting in trees now, uh, those trees are gonna get disturbed and or killed when that wall goes in. So the question is, do we put in the cost to put the trees in now, knowing that in five, six years? Um, when that wall does come around, cuz that's about the timeframe for the interchange project, was it twenty thirty-two, something like that? Um, that we probably are gonna lose that, that, that investment. But it's an investment for seven years, is that worth to the community to have that investment, that's a question for later, but I posed the question now that uh, cuz we're not talking a little bit of money to put those new trees in, we're gonna be talking some, some, some investment.
Well, do we know exactly where the wall's gonna go?
Typically put on their FL line, which is.
Be on their side.
Yeah.
Be in their easement.
Can I just play devil's advocate for a minute?
You're good at it.
Thank you, I have experience, um, what if not everybody in the city wants the sound wall? Like, is there a number of signatures they need to get? I'm not saying that it's a bad thing. Um, but I have spoken to people who don't want a sound wall that live near there, so then it becomes a hard stance, I feel like, for the city to say, yes, we're one hundred percent behind this, if we have to represent every resident, and not everyone wants it, so.
It's a good question, because you put a sound wall up on the west side, it's gonna reverberate the noise back to the east, but if you put a sound wall on both sides, now, and how far is it?
We requested them to do on both sides.
Did they say how high a sound wall in that area would be?
Just like when you sit down eighty-nine.
My question was, um, the reason why it wasn't initially installed to begin with is cuz the houses are set back a lot further from the road than, further down, aren't they?
The only reason it wasn't put in before is because it's outside of the scope of all the projects that they've done. It has to be within a project, and the, the new eighty-nine corridor that they put in stopped at one ninety-three. And so now the new one that they're gonna do is interchange at eighty-four, so we're kind of in a dead spot in the middle. And so we're hoping that they'll expand that scope to include.
I understand their project might exclude a new lane, um, s- southbound, like a shop on on ramp, eighty-nine, being its own lane going all the way up to one ninety-three, which if they do, that incorporates that area, and it's an easier sell to put a wall in from that perspective, but.
So it's worth pursuing, I haven't had anybody uh say they don't wanna sound wall.
Okay, I have.
I think that's a legitimate call out, like, I could, I don't want the sound wall, cuz I, I like to, when I'm driving my four-wheeler up those roads, it's nice to not have it there, but I could totally see if I had a house right there, that that, the noise would probably be ridiculous.
Yeah, it would be interesting, um, and this is coming from someone who's been trying to get, uh, you know, don't use your Jake brakes here, I know that I lost that, but, so I, just hear me out though, because it would be interesting to see if people are saying, I would rather have my view or I'd rather have no sound, because the sound wall will increase views significantly.
And for them to start petitioning as they go around.
Yeah.
And get signatures, they'll find out who, who was in favor and who's not. But they, they were told, uh, that, yeah, they've, you've got to have, I think they said like eighty percent of the people have got to sign that petition.
Eighty percent of our.
Of the, the city, or in what area? Okay.
Okay. So much of that, committees, reports?
Nothing to the report.
Nothing for me.
Um, couple, uh, with the recreation department first, uh, just letting everyone know, if you haven't seen the sign across the street, little one. Um, summer camps are going, both for sports and for other activities. Um, we do have a, a couple more sports uh that will be going throughout the summer and then through the fall, so uh, all you have to do is jump online, if you're even interested, you can check out the dates, you can sign up, you can register. Um, and coming soon, you'll actually even be able to sponsor it, whether it's a, a team or a league, uh, you'll be able to uh, join in and help the kids of South Weber, if you'd like. Um, we will be doing again the Lego camp, um, I believe that uh has been started and finished.
So it's gonna be in August.
August, um, so, uh, yeah, something for everybody. Uh, next one, um, in, um, do, 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 gosh, I love to be able to read my own handwriting. Oh, um, we are also in the recreation department, looking at uh being able to uh, increase or improve the types of refreshments that we now put down in the um family activity center. Um, so if anybody has any suggestions or wants to place an order, um, uh, talk to the people that are down there. Uh, we're gonna be looking for suggestions and types of, whether it's bottled waters, drinks, protein shakes, whenever it is, that, that would be a good service for those that are down there, so.
Is this for like new vending machines that were?
Um, well, we got rid of the vending machine, so this will be sold through the family activity center itself, right there at the, the counter. So we'll have it on display, and if people wanna get it, great, um, and if not, that's um just a, a small service that we're trying, so we'll find out. Um.
It'd be a good revenue generator.
It could be, um, hopefully it, it works, and if it does, then this could actually um snowball into a couple of other opportunities with some of the the larger games and events that we have, that the city could get involved with. We do have, um, or, I guess it's, it's not necessarily new business, but um it would be part of um, the public safety committee, as we get into that, uh, today is the first day of selling fireworks. And with the chief here, I was wondering if he would answer, do we have any changes? Are we making any changes to the plan?
Now the map's gonna stay the same, we're one of two cities that have like a area that limits aerials, us and Leighton, I don't know why other people haven't, I think it makes sense, but yeah, we're keeping all that the same, and then hoping for more rain, um, but all my other comments I gave to standard examiner, if you wanna look that up and see what they said.
Perfect. Way to go.
Yeah, most fires, unless it's lightning, are caused by people, so um, we haven't had lightning, so hopefully people are staying smart out there, not being dumb.
Um, do we have something going out online, um, as a reminder for everyone?
Yeah, our maps gonna be posted, um, I actually checked with our Facebook manager today, and he's gonna take care of that right now.
Awesome.
And uh, but the maps have gone all to the county, and, you know, hopefully it's a safe holiday for everybody.
Isn't there also a curfew, the city have a, an ordinance that says, we cut it off at like, I don't know, two AM or one AM or something like that, or?
That'd be Lance's question.
I don't know that for sure.
Merv Taylor was pretty vocal about that when he was on the council, about people firing off, and he was trying to get some sleep at two in the morning, so I wasn't sure if there's an ordinance or anything about that.
There, I'm trying to remember, cuz I looked it up last year, and there is, it's like midnight or one.
Yeah, and I thought, whatever it is, if we can put that with the Facebook posting, so that, hey, here's the limit, and you know, have your fun, but we cut it off at this hour. Just as a reminder.
I think the only thing that we have left on it is just the noise ordinance, I don't think we still have any exclusion for uh the firework, the celebration nights, so.
Also, just make sure you soak your fireworks when you're done, every year we go on two or three garage fires where people put their fireworks in their garbage cans next to their garages, so make sure they're adequately soaked.
Yeah, I saw South Jordan was requiring all of the uh fireworks booths to have five gallon buckets that the people could take for free um, as, yeah, as part of their service, so if you wanted to set up a fireworks stand there, you had to provide just little white buckets that you could properly dispose of your fireworks with, it was kind of neat. That's it for me.
Anything else?
I do, municipal utilities, I'll report on this since Blair's gone, um, our recycling program is in full swing for can distribution, so it will start um beginning next week, um, so I know City Hall's gotten lots of phone calls about um timelines and how do I return my cans, so um just a quick reminder for residents that you won't be, the billing will start in August, um, you have through July thirty-first to return your can. Um, but you can use it during that time, see if you like it, um, trying to think what else.
When do pickups begin? Guys, notice all the cans on the curve this, today, but I noticed that the pickups will start until.
Right, so July, the first week of July, July first, second, third, that's when it will be, and it will be every other week that the recycling is picked up, so you still put it out with your black can.
So it's the first or third.
Monday, June thirtieth.
Yes, sorry.
Tuesday, July first, and Wednesday, July second, would be the first pickup day, so if you put your black can out on Mondays, put your blue can out with it on June thirtieth, and then every other weekend.
And those who wanna surrender their second black can, do they need to make a personal phone call to the public works department, come pick it up?
To City Hall, call City Hall, yeah. Uh, we've had lots of calls of all types, um, about returning second cans, getting a second blue can. Um, switching from ACE to the city program, and everything in between, how do we opt out, when's the opt-out period? Um, City Hall staff, I would say, has been amazing at answering questions and taking calls, and then explaining the program. There have been phone calls about, well, why didn't I hear about this sooner? Well, it was in the newsletter and in social media and on the city website and a direct mailer, and now there's a can in your front yard with you know, a packet of information and comments like, oh, I should probably read that, well, that would help to know the, to know the program and whatnot, we, they've been very good about um just being customer service friendly and answering as many questions as possible, and so lot, lots of uh inquiries, uh, many positive conversations, many frustrated conversations too. Um, but uh, it's been, it's been, we geared up for a, for a heavy rollout, and I think it's from my perspective, it's maybe been less than, than what we had determined, but uh, I have had very few of those phone calls, they've been handled from others, Shaylee, do you have anything you wanna? uh, I have had very few of those phone calls, they've been handled from others. Shaylee, do you have anything you wanna add to that?
I mean, it's been fun kind of predicting what the frequently asked questions are gonna be and then getting surprised when more frequently asked questions come in. You know, and we, we're updating the website as much as we can as those come in. Um, the opt-out period is coming up, but it's, it's a month long, you know, so I think that's, that's the big thing too, is a lot of people are calling in saying when they can and um, I think city staff, those on the phone have been doing a really good job at um, informing those who call in, cause I feel like a lot of the residents who do call in that are frustrated. Um, once they have their questions answered, they seem a little more excited about the program and more willing to take part in it, so. It's been, it's been a roller coaster, but it's been fun.
Fourteen hundred of the twenty-two hundred accounts uh, have the potential of saving money, so it's a I think there's a lot of really good things and, and those that have come to understand that, either through the phone call or whatnot, have have appreciated, um, generally speaking, the decision, although you know, there are those that are, that are frustrated or feel like they shouldn't be forced and, well, you're not forced, you have an opt-out period and so almost, almost universally, as people get off the phone, they're in a better situation than when they made the phone call. So I think that's a credit to how staff is handling those calls. Um, and I'm appreciative of that, it's been, it's been a good rollout in my mind. Eighteen hundred of the twenty-two hundred cans have already been delivered and the last few hundred should be out before the end of the week. They need to be.
And I do wanna piggyback off of that, um, Wasatch Integrated is offering a free tour to all residents um, of the sorting facility. I got to go tour it a couple times and it's pretty dang cool, yeah, it's, it's pretty cool seeing how everything works, um. So that's gonna take place on, I believe, July eleventh from one PM to three thirty PM, it's an open house, so come when you can and they'll have tours going from that timeframe.
Yeah, good.
I think the question I run mind is, when are we gonna get the green can?
Yeah, Mayor, when are we getting the green can?
They, they are discussing that now, making that option. Clairefield City decided not to uh, have the blue can, but to have the green can, so their recycling program is green waste recycling. So Clairefield is doing that. And there are, I think West Point might have green cans, but it's a kind of an, an opt-in on that, but they are uh, and have been discussing that at the district, that, that'll be their next push, is to do green, but they gotta make some improvements and kind of expand their green waste area to be able to take all of that on, so, but that's in the pipeline.
Um, I had just one other thing about this, um, correct me if I'm wrong, in these meetings, we were discussing that when they collect the blue can, they may not necessarily be marked in a recycling garbage truck, it may still be a typical opposite waste truck. So if people are like, these aren't even going in different things, they're, they are being, they're different.
The, the trucks look the same, right? They're all branded the same, same colors and things, they don't mark blue trucks for blue cans and things, they, they do all look the same, so I know there have been uh, questions or confusion in the past about where it goes. Uh, the tour that Shaylee described, City Hall staff, uh, those that are taking phone calls were able to go and do that tour so that they could ask, answer that question directly, um, with firsthand knowledge of where the trucks go and where they dump. Um, I know the mayor's had some personal conversations uh, with friends and neighbors about that as well. Um, and as a board member up there knows exactly where those trucks go. Um, all of the trucks go to the MRF, they go to the sorting facility there and you have the garbage side and you have the recycling side and you know, if you go and, and look at that tour, you can watch that take place in person.
Awesome, one more thing just to note for anybody um, watching or listening, if, if you do opt out, your cans will not be picked up until after the opt-out period, so it would be better to not leave them on the street for a month until they are able to be scheduled to be picked up, so don't panic if you call and say I'm opting out, it will happen. So, okay, that's all I have on that, and then um, as far as my reports, first concert in the park, I'll defer to Shaylee for that.
Yeah, so Concert in the Park is happening this week, uh, Thursday from, we're pushing it later because last year it was really hot during the concert. So we're pushing it from seven PM to eight thirty PM. Um, this year, we're only having one, so if you don't make it to this one, you miss it for the whole year. Um, and because we're only having one, I've gotten to get some pretty cool stuff for this one, so we've got a couple food trucks coming and I just announced on Facebook that we also have some bounce houses. So it's, it's gonna be a good time, I think the event right now on Facebook has like nine hundred twenty-seven respondents, but that doesn't mean all of them are coming, but it's Thursday at Central Park from seven PM to eight thirty PM.
You said it starts at eight thirty?
Seven.
Seven.
Seven PM to eight thirty PM, yeah.
The only ones, so I expect to see all of the cattle down.
Yee-haw.
We got a great musical act, so I'm excited.
Should be really good.
I'm excited, I think it'll, the, the ones last year were incredible, I think this one's gonna even be more so, so, yeah, I'm excited for it.
Yeah.
So one thing probably worth going back on recycling and mentioning, if right now uh, residents that are contracted with ACE uh, needs to contact ACE to uh, have their can picked up and stop that contract, so that has to be instigated by uh, the residents that has those cans. Some of that, some have asked me that, so it's worth mentioning. Okay, if nothing else.
Who to adjourn?
For motion to adjourn, and we've got that and we've got a second. All in favor, say aye.